It's five o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a work session, but it's a special meeting, so there will be no decisions made here tonight, but I think the purpose is just to form a dialogue, looking at a couple issues, I think. One particularly, the proposed of the concept for the sports complex between Penn Avenue and Park Boulevard, and then I'd also visited with Brent since our last conversation about some things similarly with the swimming pool, but just kind of start with, you know, we have the memorandum of understanding that we had presented and signed and sent to you, and looking at it and some thoughts about what could be done, and I wonder if maybe the memorandum for understanding is out of sync. What I see, the city rec's job is to handle the recreation for the city of Independence, the youth and all your programs. Our role, in my opinion, is for support. We have the property, but yet I don't see our role as being involved in telling you the layout and the workings of the fields and the operation. I think we have a unique situation with that property and the thought of centralizing a complex for soccer and baseball. And why would we not want to look at the full potential for that parcel? So if it included modifying some baseball field layouts to get the optimum use, we're gonna have parking that will, the two seasons for soccer and baseball, different times of year, you can consolidate, so why not look at an overall complex design? Then also, you know, we haven't heard about funding. What part can the city play? What part can you afford? We haven't had any budgets, and I'm gonna go out on a limb, speaking just for myself. I haven't talked to the other commissioners or staff, but you know, we've got the special use sales tax is gonna sunset, and it'll go for another vote. What's the potential for funding some majority of the sports complex through the special use sales tax? So you know, we could really do a nice complex, that we're not just gonna do part of it and get by with what we have, but you know, are we really at the point that instead of let's talk about how it operates, let's see what the potential we can have in that area? And then how can we work together to get that done? You know, I don't see that the city, we should be working out baseball schedules, your expertise of working out what that needs to be, but what can we support you with? The land, utilities there, services? So you know, I'm thinking this would probably be better, instead of let's go with an agreement, but let's strive to get an agreement that will accomplish the most possible for that parcel. And you know, kind of taking this to the next point where you're operating the swimming pool for us, there seems to be a lag in some scheduling, you know. Each time we come with repairs or improvements, there's a delay in getting it done, that maybe we should work as an active budget, that we have maintenance included, and the fund from one year could be encumbered, but you know, we've got annual maintenance, we've got life cycle on equipment, and hey, we got a life cycle on that pool, too. So how are we gonna prepare for that? Maybe, you know, we need to start looking at that also. So that's kind of what I've been going through since we had the initial meeting and some conversations with Brent and other board members since then, and maybe we need to look at the full potential of what we have now. I'm saying that Dean, board, jump in.
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to participate in that, at that meeting, but I'm particularly interested in what we might do with this particular parcel, because its central location makes it a much more ideal than putting this type of complex out at the perimeter of the city's limits. It makes it more accessible to all types of people, not just the youth, but the regular, the rest of the citizens. So I look forward to seeing what the optimal space utilization might mean, and how we might include other aspects of city life within that same parcel.
Well, Leonard, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, by any means, think you guys think I disagree. I don't disagree with any of that, and I, and I'm okay with memorandum of understanding, or contracts, or whatever we wanna say, on all the different entities, I believe, going forward. Where we got off track was, this was just about the soccer complex, and I don't wanna mislead you guys. I mean, we tried to be honest from the start. We don't know what it's gonna cost. I mean, we don't know that in number. Is it out of our, you know, we're not gonna do any fundraising or anything, so it's gonna come out of our budget, so you know, it will probably have to be done in phases. All we were trying to do was, you know, get permission for that lot of land and get started on it, and what we mean by get started on it, you know, start clearing some of the trees, and then we would come up with a plan eventually, obviously, and that's what we thought we were bringing back to you. I think where we got off track, though, is this was more encompassing, it was about the baseball fields that were already there. There again, I'm not saying we're against some of this stuff, it's just wasn't in the original agreement we were going with, didn't have the maintenance, I believe, number six, I'm not sure the whole thing, but our concern was the pre-existing ADA requirements already at the baseball fields. There again, I'm not saying we don't need an agreement with that, but we did not plan to have it attached to the soccer facility at the time, or the facility, so that's kinda why we're back and chatting, so. But right now, we're using the baseball fields doubled up. I'm sorry?
Yeah, Melissa?
Yeah, I've heard the statements that Dean and you and Brent had made. I think maybe we had talked about this quite a while back, about defining where that maintenance line is drawn, and that was concerning, whether it's the rec commission, or library, or whatever it determines to be, that we seem to have a lack of setting enough funds together to maintain the facilities over the long term, and as far as that special use sales tax, that might be a good opportunity to restructure how that one scene is gonna be divided up and maybe cover up with some funding that would be available to them. But it seems like we've, we're good at identifying projects and bringing projects to the front and completing the projects, but we, sometimes we seem to fail following up and making sure we have adequate resources to maintain those facilities over the long term, and then setting the boundaries to, you know, here's what you're gonna be looking at as far as a recommission, here's what the city's gonna be responsible for. And from what I read, I think there was concerns about some ADA issues that have already been brought up that maybe we're still working on, and maybe that was part of the question, that they had some concerns on. But I think we really need to determine, you know, how we're gonna proceed on this. Right now, they're just looking at doing some brush clearing and some tree removal and all that, that we probably ought to have a pretty good understanding as where that line's gonna be drawn. How much money are we gonna be able to set aside in a reserve for them to draw on to make improvements, because you know, they're handling the day-to-day operation, the scheduling of the games, the condition of the fields, and all that, and which is great, because I sure wouldn't wanna be in charge of having to do that, but maybe that's where we need to start looking at, and then, and then draw up something that's agreeable to all parties, that this is what we will do, and proceed from there.
Well, in the past, the rec commission paid for building all the fields and the structures for the baseball complex. Isn't that correct?
Okay.
The city didn't fund any of that?
No, we, the concession of bathrooms down there, we funded.
Okay.
Yes.
So, you know, that's what, looking at, at doing ADA work on what's existing could hinge on what is done in the future, that, you know, you could build new, new restroom, new concession stand, and these would be, storage facilities are raised even. So you know, instead of going in and putting the money in to ADA improvements and then change with a master plan, then, you know, hold off and let's do it all once we know what's gonna be final. Just like I mentioned with the parking area, you could do consolidation of parking, have hard surface and ADA parking there, and that's where, you know, not saying we wouldn't assist with some of the cost for that, but let's determine what actually needs to be done based on the whole facility, and then looking at if we could phase it in with some special use sales tax, then it changes the costs considerable, then, you know, funding for the fields, the fencing, the lighting, additional restrooms, new restroom, new concession stand, announcers, whatever, you know, the whole project could be looked at, at that, so it wouldn't be a strain on existing budget to get it completed, but would be an efficient field that could work, 'cause I guess it all comes down to needing to know what that dollar is to get it done, and then how can we work together to see that it comes to fruition?
Right.
Well, the ball fields ourselves, we have no plans of revamping them. In fact, we just, okay, we're about $25,000 going into the fields themselves on the inside right now. We just hired TLC, they're redoing all five fields, and that, that starts with the leveling process and bringing in dirt and whatever. That's on the inside part of the fields. So those fields where they're at, we always wanna maintain. There is obviously a chance, we've talked about a big parking lot on the south side that could obviously help both, but I, there would be no plans, even as far as we are now, I think. There are no plans as far as getting rid of our current concession stand that's over on the baseball side. We would like an additional one over on the soccer complex side, what we call, I know for saying sports complex, but where we're playing soccer. But right now, that nine point two acres would just be for parking lots and soccer fields. We would not be moving any baseball fields over there. We like, we like where, well, we say five fields, we like where the five fields are, and like I said, we've made a commitment already as a rec commission to get them redone. This, it'll be done within the next month, actually, through TLC, so. I do understand what you guys are saying, and yeah, we don't wanna, I don't like having to do the temporary and, you know, waste the money, and you know, if we know what we're doing, but also, too, don't want you to have to, you know, we do something and then we try to replace it. But I think we're pretty set on the baseball, softball side, where those facilities are gonna stay, so we'll still have the issue with parking, you know, the ADA parking and walkways and that stuff.
Can you eliminate some of the congestion over on Park Boulevard with new parking areas? That's such, see, that's such a mess, and that's the thing that if you look at a whole plan, to alleviate a lot of the congestion, a lot of the traffic, the problems crossing Park Boulevard, and you know, it changes from the open parking where nothing's striped to designated ADA parking for the fields. It changes the whole complexion of what would be done in that. So there is a connection between the two, that if the fields stay, parking is what would shift, and then also then looking at the change of traffic flow. Is that Sycamore Street to the south?
Yes, it is Sycamore.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. The document that's in front of us this evening, this memorandum of understanding, when was this, is this, is this the original document, or is this a revised?
Well, the one that was approved on December 12th, I believe.
This, this document that's in front of me is the one that was approved on December the 12th?
In that respect, yes.
Okay. And so can you define for me what revenue neutral is, what, why is that in there?
This was intended to be a very general opening document, so they could start clearing timber. This wasn't, intended to be the final document. And people kept wanting stuff, and added it, so we added it, and we were talking about some very specific stuff, so. I'll do what, I'll draw whatever you want, but the initial conversation was this would just be general, so they could break ground and start clearing timber for the soccer fields, because they've already used temporary builds one year, and they can create templates, you know, if there's something in place, you can come out next year and get it.
Correct.
Is there some concern that the work that the rec commission is going to be commencing is going to drive some kind of new or additional expense for the city?
That was never expressed, but I think the intent was to keep revenue neutral for the city.
So this, this, what is the extent of this agreement? It seems like we are expressing in item three and six that there is some concern that a memorandum of understanding is gonna drive cost. I don't-
Six was added, it wasn't in the original agreement. The intent was clear this, clear it, and then ready to do some construction, come back and finalize with the city commission the details of that, and I assumed if there was any discussion of them wanting the city to fund anything, that would be the time, and that would be the vote. But they hadn't said that-
So is this, is this conversation about revenue neutrality, or even this, this need to, upon execution of this agreement, meaning the memorandum of understanding itself, a transfer of cost from the city to Independence Rec Commission? Is that what we're talking about there, when we say number six, maintenance, beginning on the date of execution of this agreement, IRC shall maintain all property subject to this agreement, including the undeveloped property, as well as the currently utilized property, such as the skate park area and softball, baseball facilities, including the responsibility for mowing and the like?
No, it was a transfer.
Is that, is that what you're already doing?
Yes. And Dean, if I may, six, we had agreed to basically through five is where we were at, and we were okay with it, and we came back to the city with, we were good with that, we would sign, 'cause once again, this was just about the new soccer complex, that nine point two areas behind the skate park. We had agreed that we would maintain the skate park itself as far as mowing goes, 'cause we do not currently do that. But anyway, it was just kind of a, the first document, like Jeff said, to get us started, so we could look into clearing the land, seeing what some costs would be, and then when we got it back, the six was added, as well as the addition of the baseball softball complex kinda as a whole. And that's where we kinda got on, because where you read, when I went a real, little further, it says to the extent that the, on there on number six maintenance, the last sentence there, "to the extent that ADA requirements apply to any use or development." Well, obviously, we're already using the baseball and softball facilities, and there are current ADA requirements going on over there that we're in phase one of with the city. So that was my concern when this was added, and that's what we were asking is-
So is this number six by the city, did the city add this, or did the commission add it?
It was through our discussion. I thought we were working on a total final document, not just a clearing, or grubbing or clearing of the lot.
So is this, is the memorandum of understanding supposed to drive cost at all? I mean, are we talking about assigning cost responsibilities for future maintenance by this document? I would think there would be a different, even a contract, or other, some other definition of responsibility for cost that would be driven by a contractual agreement, instead of this more or less, it's okay to cut a tree down kind of document?
That's always intended to be initially. You know, when they met and discussed, it both sides recognized there's nothing wrong. The question was who maintains it, the city rec says we've always maintained it, but intend to change that. Just had a general discussion, and wanted permission to, or permission was given, intended to be just a general thing. And I actually thought later, when they got their plans more specific, they would come back to the commission and say, okay, here's our footprint, and here's what we think the cost might be, for phase one, phase two, phase three, and the five.
Jeff, I'm just getting from you the idea that maybe this memorandum of understanding is, is not binding in terms of driving cost to, or to the rec commission, or cost to the city at this point?
No, it wasn't intended to address cost, really.
When we left that day after the city commission meeting, that's what our understanding was, but then we got this form, and number six was added, so we were concerned that we were going to have to do all the ADA that was already required on the softball baseball fields. So that's why we haven't signed it.
What I'm feeling out here is just the, what is a memorandum of understanding, and why it would drive cost one way or the other, and I don't, in my mind, it wouldn't drive cost. Any cost would be further discussed and voted on, seriously.
There's two ways to look at it. One is, yeah, it's just a permission to clear the property. The other is, it's a total document to manage and maintain the whole site, and that was my understanding when we were working on a agreement, and brought that up at the commission meeting, that it was a total document of management in the end. It wasn't clear that we just want a letter telling us we have the right to clear the trees. You know, you can do that in a letter saying, can we clear the trees off of this number of acres between here and here? Sure, go ahead, but we need an agreement to go for the future development, and what about the ball fields? You know, right now, it's like you built the buildings, and we're responsible for the ADA on buildings that you built. You built the parking lots, and we're responsible for the ADA on the parking lots.
And that's a decision we had, but it hadn't occurred today.
Yeah, and that's what I thought-
I think they think we jumped the gun by adding paragraph six. If we did have paragraph six, maybe we could just move forward with the understanding, and later details would be done.
Yeah, right, 'cause I thought it was total, and-
A total contract would be much more specific.
And that's why I brought those issues up when we were discussing it, that it wasn't there.
I had to draw from a specific, is there any planning stage?
Yeah, and I don't think it was mentioned at our commission meeting that this is just the right to clear trees, that's all we wanna do. So I was looking at, at one-
Well, maybe we got misunderstood somewhere, but yes, we were just asking, you know, we'd come like seven months prior to this and ask, and it was, you know, kinda talked about it was a good idea, but then we never moved forward on anything. So when I came back a few months ago, yes, it was just for permission to move forward. Once again, we don't know if we're looking at 300,000, or honestly, 650,000, once we start getting the plant, you know, to the planning stage. So you know, yeah, we're just asking for permission to move forward on it, because there, I mean, there are a couple other areas we can look at for soccer fields, but I mean, we do need a large, you know, place for them and to keep them centrally located. This is obviously one of the better ideas, although it does have a lot of work to be done. There's a lot to clear, and you know, honestly, those first numbers, we're kinda just running random numbers, 'cause we haven't put it out to bid yet, but it'll be a process.
Well, I agree that the location is, is ideal. Central to the community, central to the residential areas, you've already got the ball field, so there's some cost savings by sharing parking, services, water sets, electric sets, you know, so it's ideal location. So you know, that was probably the point that I was looking at. We need an agreement for everything, but, and that's what the question, I'm the one that brought up about the ADA, 'cause I looked at it as a final document, and you know, if all we need at this point is permission to clear trees and, and begin that phase, yeah, it can be a lot simpler.
Well, yeah, that was, that was our desire the whole time, and then like you say, I mean, obviously, we would need plans eventually, and get a master plan as far as that goes, that we would come back and present to you guys, and we, but until we got it, until we get some opening numbers and even see, you know, if we're talking 50, $60,000 just to clear out the trees, then you know, it's probably not something we're gonna be able to do. We probably need to look for another parcel of land, or do something like that, 'cause we could even possibly purchase something, you know, flat and already out there, that we've looked at a couple places. So yeah, all we're, all we're doing, all we wanted to do with this, and there again, we're not saying those documents are not, not needed and preferred down the road, we're just asking for permission to, to look into if we can use that area or not for soccer, and the start of that would be checking into how much it would cost to clear it, get it leveled off, that type of stuff, and then obviously, if we're still good at that point, and we feel financially like we can pull it off within the next few years, we'd come back to you, get an actual master plan, architects draw it up, and we'd come back to you with our, you know, and what phases we could do it. We, we just are kinda jumping the gun, because as Jeff just said, we played soccer a couple seasons out on the baseball field. It's doable, it's workable, but it's not ideal. We would prefer, especially with the money, all the money we're putting into the baseball fields, that they stay baseball facilities. So we are just kinda in more of a hurry, 'cause like I said, if this isn't gonna work for us, then we need to move on to plan B or C, whatever that may be, so.
Yeah, I, I got from our discussion that it was much more definite, and, and a done deal, this is where they're gonna go, so.
Yeah, we would like to think that, but like you said, we would, we also gotta keep an open mind if we, if we run into, you know-
And you know, that's I guess the advantage of writing. If we get a proposal that says, hey, we want permission to clear some trees and investigate, then we move that way, and this is the importance of writing now, that from that writing, we found out that that wasn't the direction we understood each other going. So I think it was beneficial to get to this point, and you know, do, do we need just a letter of request to clear trees, or do we need a formal document then?
At the meeting where this was discussed, I told you I just made the city committee's meeting, and I said I could prepare a twenty page document, a memorandum of understanding, and you just gave permission. You told me to prepare something, and that's all I was gonna explain here. You don't have to, so-
So if the-
You do a motion in open session, and you give permission, and I was instructed to put something together, to get an update, come back later, and formalize.
Yeah, I think the misunderstanding was in the direction, like I said, when we talked, it assumed broader than what the intent was. So you know, we need either a letter of request, or we need a memorandum that says you can clear the trees.
I think we have, we have a request.
Then we go back.
Item six taken out, and then they're okay with it?
If you go to item six, that would be sufficient. Paragraph one, you consent to the development, or the two, future development.
And we're in agreement with that. I mean, if number six is dropped, I mean, obviously, we're kinda-
So you're not gonna do the mowing at the skate park and all of that, I just wanna make sure that we understand what our responsibilities are.
No, we agreed, we agreed we would mow the skate park, please.
Because that's covered in there, and then I think that other was added in, so.
No, the, when we discussed it, we agreed we would also, I mean, we would be more than happy to maintain, you said you were currently mowing skate parks, and you would like not to have to take the city stuff down there, and we said we'd be down there anyway, we'd be more than happy to pick that up, so.
So in item six, if you deleted it, when it says the word, some of the properties covered by the screen were carved by the city for stamp, so it's gonna be much-
Sorry, just the paragraph six and the entire.
But he's saying that they will, they will mow it and that's covered in there in that first part?
But we also don't want the added baseball softball facilities, the ADA stuff.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we can't have any, that's, that's the concern.
You leave any part of six in there, you're expanding it beyond what the initial request was and what the initial permission is just to mow and clear trees.
I don't know why we need to tie mowing the skate park to clearing trees in the property adjacent to that. Can we handle that as a separate issue?
If they say they do it, I'm sure they do it.
I'll give you my word that we will do it.
I'm just saying you could reword it.
I mean, we have no problem going on record and saying we will do it.
Yeah, you could reword it and have it covered easily, but whatever you want to do.
Yeah, it's just easier with you having the equipment that you're going to be mowing that whole area to mow that little part that we don't have to have a ground screw.
So you could say, including the, the city shall maintain all the properties subject to this agreement, including the undeveloped property as well as the currently utilized property, including the skate park and put a period there. Is that what you-
Yeah.
I'm saying-
I'm saying-
And baseball and softball.
I think we said, I thought we said drop paragraph six from this particular document to proceed.
But six does, the first sentence does cover the, the maintenance of the undeveloped property.
Yes.
You put a period after skate park area and drop everything below it.
Well, it says and baseball and softball facilities, which they're already doing.
You just said you didn't want to go beyond giving permission to clear trees. Now you're going to be on that, so I'm just-
Well, mowing was always part of that in the first session. We all agreed on that.
Why don't you mark the one that's got paragraph six the way that you're acceptable in signing it and then send it for us to review?
We would be fine with just dropping six, giving you our word on record, including TV or where on that, but we will gladly go ahead and mow the skate park part area like we are. We're not trying to get out of any of that. What I'm trying, the, I just don't want to wait a whole nother month, go back to my board, then we're into February, then I'm not coming back to you with March. And like I said, it's just, we know we can't do this overnight. We know it's a long process already, so we just don't want to waste a bunch of time going back and forth. If you give us permission to, to get some bids and see about moving some trees and, you know, starting on that process, we have no problem starting to maintain the ceiling. We've always maintained baseball softball, although we don't want that in this agreement. And we will continue to do so and we would also be more than happy if we want to do, there again, we're not opposed to another agreement that states this other stuff. We just don't want it attached to the soccer complex when all we're trying to do is get moving on that. So we would gladly sign it, even though I don't have a form. I know I've been given permission by my board. I mean, if six isn't in there, then that's what we agreed to in the original. And with, there again, us taking care of around the skateboard part, we have no problem mowing and maintaining that as well.
Well, we can't accept the contract tonight in the work session, but it can go with your signature and you can sign the document and send it to Kelly.
Actually, a policy about work sessions, it says if the commissioners unanimously consent to it, you can take action.
I thought it did and I looked that up in the handbook and couldn't find it.
It's in the policy. The idea of work session was you would take action, prepare what you would need here.
Right.
Sneak something in because you knew you weren't here or something.
Right.
But if all three of you participate and all three of you agree, you can do that.
Okay, we're over, but Louis, are you still there?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, then first I'm going to make a motion that we add to the agenda tonight, the review and modification of the memorandum of understanding that had been dated-
December 12th.
December 12th, 2019. So-
And I'll second that motion.
Good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. So with the discussion we had, I would make a motion that the memorandum of understanding dated December 12th, 2019 be modified with the deletion of paragraph six and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. We got the agreement then. We'll get it signed and get it to you for your board to review and move forward.
All right.
All right.
And on any of the other stuff, Leonard, I mean, we're more than happy to meet with you guys and get, I mean, we want stuff in writing, however we want to do it.
Okay.
Like I said, we're not opposed to any of it. We just didn't want it all attached to one document, so.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you guys very much.
Great.
Thank you for being here.